To order.
Trump.
Ledge Legions, United States of America, and the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the work session, August 1st, 9:30 a.m. I would ask the Secretary of Treasury to call the roll.
Edward D. Warner.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Gwen Parrish.
Present.
Gwen Pell's present and Scott Howard's.
Here.
You went here.
Okay, let's get right into our meeting. We have a couple of discussions here. Trustee Ed Warner, you have a discussion for?
The Lake Mississauga Association Board, Carl Rich.
Carl.
Carl Rich.
If you want to.
Carl, would you, if you would like to come and sit?
Well, I think it'd probably be better to stay, stay over here.
You went over there.
Okay. At the podium, no, no, at the podium's fine, where you were is fine. Is the sign-in sheet there?
Yes.
Oh, I should put my name?
Yes.
And state it for the record, please.
Do I have to fill in the address and everything?
Any contact information you could provide us would, that would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
My phone number. Okay, and I should state it for the record?
Yes, please.
My name is Carl LaRiche. I'm the president of the Board of Lake Mississauga Association, and we're here today, we thank you, first of all, that we're here, for your prompt reply to our letter covering the invasive plants in Big Fresh Pond, and for this opportunity to supply you with some more details. We on the board, as well as many other lakeside dwellers, really do love this beautiful lake. We're so very fortunate that, for the most part, the waters are still so sweet and swimmable. However, we are now very concerned for the health of the pond. We do test the water quality each year through the New York State Federation of Lake Associations, and the generally good statistics on the water quality might make it appear that there are no problems, but actually, the spread of invasive phragmities and water lilies is now proceeding at an alarming pace. We're concerned that if remedial actions not taken soon, these invasive species will precipitate a rapid decline in water quality. We have some maps we'd like to show you now. Last September, one of our board members contracted RU Engineering to do a drone survey of the lake and identify the phragmities and water lilies. We also did our own reconnaissance of the pond, documenting the areas of phragmities and water lilies. Our Vice President Grant Greenberg will now begin the presentation.
I need the pen, Carl.
The pen, the pen.
So, these are just the board members who are here with us today. What are phragmities? If any of you don't know, it's, you know, a highly invasive reed that's from Australia. It seems to have crept all over the northeast, and it somehow has landed in Big Fresh Pond and is, just in the five years that I've lived on Big Fresh Pond, I can't believe how it's exploded. Water lilies are the other thing that we're having a problem with in specific areas of the pond right now, and we'll show you. This is the map that RU Engineering prepared, which kind of identified the areas of water lilies. As of September 2021, they calculated that there are .9 acres of phragmities growing on the shore of Big Fresh Pond, and that's running along 2,200 feet of shoreline. Phragmities form a thicket of roots and rhizomes that can spread 10 or more feet in each growing season. So, they, they just expand, spreading out along the shoreline, and eventually, they just will take over an entire shoreline, and that's what's starting to happen on Big Fresh Pond. RU also documented that the water lilies are at 4.52 acres of the pond right now, and they're incredibly invasive in specific areas, in the shallower areas of the pond.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
There might be help to people who are watching this home, if you can just point out where you're talking about on the lake?
I'm going to give you that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
So, this was our own map that we prepared with Google Maps, and we just outlined, the yellow areas are the areas of water lilies, and the red areas are, the biggest areas are phragmities. Little, little dots of phragmities are starting to come up in other areas, but these are the big clumps of them right now. And, so, these are the calculations there again, and then we prepared a little video here that will kind of take us, and if you can play the video for me, that'd be great. So, yeah, there's Big Fresh Pond. And so, just to give you a sense, we've taken some photographs of some of the largest areas of the phragmities. So, this is just in front of the Wolf Swamp Preserve, which is on the northwest side of the pond, where there's a big stand of the phragmities. You can see how dense they are. Once they, once they get established like that, nothing can get through them, so like the snapping turtles and stuff, if they're trying to go onto the land to like nest, they can't break their way through the thicket. It's so, it's so dense. Then, this is the thicket, the area that's in front of the Pekonik Land Trust property. They own a small property on the lake. And then, this area here is where you can see them just starting to get established here. They're not, it's not fully established as a, as an area, but probably by next summer, I would imagine that'll just be dense reeds, and nothing will be able to get through. And they, they literally crowd out the native vegetation, and it all just dies back. This, this next area is a private landowner, and his property, he's been on the, on the pond for 60 years, and his property used to have a sandy beach, and now that's what's been replaced. And you can see that he can't even access the beach that, that used to be there, it's completely crowded out. And then, on the western shore, there are a series, kind of like dotting all the way along there, you can see them in the red, and they're dotting along, and we've got some other photos that I'll show you in a second, which show that, like, some property owners can't even, can barely even get to the pond to get, to launch a kayak or something like And, you know, right now, I think 17% of the perimeter of the pond has phragmities on it, and so, at 10, if they're growing in clumps at 10 feet, extending out 20 feet, basically, each year, it's only a matter of time before the whole pond is surrounded with them. And then, looking at the water lilies, the areas where the water lilies are the worst are in front of Elliston Park, where the public beach is. So, they're, and I'll show you in a second how, how much they've come in, just in the, in the last couple of years. And then, in the, the southwest side of the pond, that's one of the shallower areas of the pond, and literally, like, it's hundreds of, hundreds of feet between the shore and where you can actually get to open water. This is one of the least bad areas, that's by Elliston. And then, in that south portion, you can see, that's how deep they are. And, and you can, you can actually, like, easily get a kayak out through them even. And there, there's the combination of the water lilies plus the phragmities. So, I think some homeowners are like, able to like, push back the phragmities from their docks, but then they can't even, even launch a kayak beyond that. Can we advance to the next slide? It doesn't seem to want to go. And go to the next one after this? Can we advance to the next? Yeah.
Yeah.
Hang on. Okay, there we go. So, this is the Google Earth map from 2006, September 2006. You can see the water lilies that kind of patch in the middle of the dark area there, and that's what it looks like as of September 2019. So, now, it's even worse.
Can you go back?
And then, this is the water lilies at Elliston Park Beach. This is 2026. They're kind of in that little curved area there, on the top-left corner of the pond, by the beach, and that's it, 2019. You can see, even in the other areas, like in the top-right corner there, you can see how much larger they are and how much they've spread. This is the southwest corner of the pond, this is the worst area for the water lilies. It's pretty obvious here how much bigger they are. So, it's a tremendous amount of additional plant growth, and this is the exact, these satellite photos were both taken in September of those years. So, I'll let Norm Freiberg speak a little bit about the effect on, for homeowners.
My name is Norm Freiberg. I've had a house on Big Fresh Pond for 45 years. There were always some lily pads, but in the past decade, we've seen them blanket the entire southwest corner of the lake, an area formerly known as Turtle Cove, but now the eastern painted turtles have all but disappeared. This blanket of lily pads makes the area inaccessible to swimmers, and I have personally seen and been in sailboats stuck in those lily pads, unable to move without assistance, and paddleboarders abandoning their boards. Year after year of water lilies dying and decaying on the bottom have built up a deep layer of detritus, muck, that can be several feet deep in some locations. Where my children used to go swimming without the least fear, I now find that I can be stuck in muck nearly hip-deep, only a few feet from my dock. Closed off from free circulation, the water has become stagnant and foul-smelling, at times. Also, within the past few years, the phragmities have propagated to such an extent that our access to the pond has become radically restricted, and even then, there are about 100 feet of lily pads between the phragmities and the water. There's an adjacent town property next to mine that is completely closed in, that you can't get through the phragmities or the lily pads to get to the lake on the town property. I worry too, because phragmities can even present a fire hazard in winter when they're, and they're pretty close to my home. I've done some research on phragmities, they're a concern all around the country. Delaware, Maryland, Michigan, and all across New York State, many communities are making efforts to remove them. Here is Co-Vice President Dieter von Lesten to summarize. Thank you.
My name is Dieter von Lesten. I'm talking to you today as the Vice President of our Lake Association. I don't have to add very much to what has been said, I think it's been pretty obvious what is happening to this lake. As you can see, these invasive species are beginning to have a detrimental effect on the pond. If left unchecked, phragmities will rapidly spread along the shore, crowd out the native species, and the spread of water lilies will continue to reduce water quality. A management plan is needed to eradicate phragmities and to control the growth of the water lilies. We appeal to you, the trustees, to address this issue with urgency so the pond can be enjoyed by all South Haven residents for years to come. Please act on it, we would very much appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dieter.
Thank you.
Anybody else speaking on this? I mean, this invasive plant issues, not just germane to this water body.
No, it's not.
It's a problem throughout the town, I think we're going to have to formulate protocol and a strategy.
Well, I mean, looking at, you know, working with Dieter in the past, allowing them to harvest some of the water lilies, allowing them to make access pass to the pond for swimmers and kayakers, was what we had done in the past, but looking like, I believe it's like five or six years to the future now, that, looking where we are and seeing what's going on in Lake Agawam, going on in.
Mill Pond.
Mill Pond, in SAG, and all these other ponds, we have, worked with homeowners that want to do either, you know, lily pad remediation, like the Agawam Conservancy, they have a harvester which allows them to harvest the, you know, the top part of the lily pads, and it takes all the leaves and stuff out, leaves the rhizome so they can regrow, and basically, by taking the, you know, the pads out, basically, you're taking all the nutrients out. It's a costly proposition, you know, either, any one of these projects. So, coming up with a plan that would be acceptable to our board and to the DEC to move forward is probably a real big, heavy lift, looking at the whole pond. My thought would be to take an area, whether it's a town property or a private property, and try to get some funding to remove the phragmities first off on a pilot project, and then, looking towards the pond in a bigger picture with the water lilies, and, and trying to find funding to do that project, because, I mean, you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to be able to do this project properly, to get all the permits, which, I don't know what the other board members are, they're going to speak after myself, what their thoughts are, but, I mean, to be aggressive to remove some of the lily pads, the phragmities is a three- or four-year project. We have a consultant that we've worked in the past with that has pretty successful projects in SAG, so we do have, you know, some science backing up some of these projects. Being that said, I'd like to, any of the other board members.
I mean, I think it's a town-wide, town-wide issue.
Yes.
You know, I think we need to formulate some type of a strategy, protocol that, that makes sense, because we're hearing this time and time again now, and it's a lot of pressure on the waterway, and, you know, there are benefits, as you say, removing those nutrients out of the water that are degrading the water quality. I also think that if we're going to attack that, it would be, as, as you say, at times, trustee wanted this holistic type of approach, and I think that, since it is affecting many of the water bodies, we need to look at it on a, on a grander scale. It may be more cost-effective to look at it on a grander scale. If we're going to engage in that equipment that's going to take care of it, I think it's something that we need to look into. I think we need to work with the community, and maybe some representatives from the various different water bodies.
Yes.
Formulate some type of a subcommittee or something, because this is not a problem that's going to just go away, it's going to have to be actively dealt with throughout the township, and just like other communities are engaging in a more proactive strategy on dealing with it, I think we're going to have to do the same.
I agree with Scott in that, I don't want to rehash what they just said, but I want to say that your presentation was very good, very interesting. It is a town-wide problem, and we have to somehow find a solution to combat it.
Can I say something?
Sure. Go ahead.
What I very much appreciate that you're thinking the way you do and what you have expressed right now is, I'm only afraid that we're losing very much time if you look at the holistic, town-wide approach. Before that, all the various ponds sort of would get together and do something, I'm afraid we're losing a lot of time. I appreciate that the cost factor is enormous, and as I may add, we are not Lake Agawam, and I know, you know what, what that means. Is there a chance from the CPF funds, from the water fund, to get some money?
Well, that's, that's an excellent point, and excellent question. I mean, obviously, we don't hold the purse strings on the CPF, but there certainly, I think, could be a chance, and I think that the fact that this situation isn't just, you know, specific to this water body, it's, it's a town-wide problem.
Right.
I think helps with the, you know, the gravity of the importance on, on dealing with it in a manner that you say, when you've got an ability with a law that allows you to deal with water quality in a certain way, and I think when you're talking about cost factors, whether you're going to go out, you know, purchase a machine that'll handle this, or you're going to hire a company that's going to come in and do this, I think that you are, it does cost money, but I think if you're able to hit many targets at a, at a point in time, I think it may be more cost-effective and it may make more sense. Now, obviously, you know, we've all got a lot of homework that we have to do, but I don't think anybody disagrees with the fact this is a problem, and it has to be addressed, it's just that we need to come up with the proper proactive strategy on how we address.
Scott, what, what do you think is a timeline to, to get, to get this?
You know what, I think we, we need to deal with it immediately, because this is not the first presentation in the last few months that we're hearing of this.
That's right.
And I've been actually back and forth with people that are actually purchasing this equipment, and that were, you know, offering to come here to start working on remediating some of these issues, it's just that, you know, we, it's not like private business where you can make a decision and go off and do something, you have to go through the proper steps. I think when you have a collaboration of people with an expertise, you know, and, and can, can express to the folks on the CPF, you have a lot of very smart people there as well that are on committees, we could get our points across and see if there's a possibility for them to help us out with this, I think that would be good, I think we should get on it right away. In terms of what a reasonable timeline is, I would be guessing, speculating like, like you would be as well, but I think if we can get fast on this, I've already started doing some research and talking to some people that have the equipment, perhaps to remedy these, because it's in other areas and it has to be dealt with, so, be more than happy to work with you on that. I'm sure this board will be more than happy to work with you on that, and maybe we can get better timelines as we.
Yeah. Okay, appreciate that very much, thank you.
I think your presentation was excellent, I think it's a good start to a narrative. If our board's in agreement to start a discussion and come up with a presentation to the CPF funding people, the committee, you know, it's, as far as a timeline, you'd want to get funding, working on the permits, so it's like a two-to-three-year process if we started today, being realistic, I mean, and it's, and that's if our board was wholeheartedly pushing behind it, and we had funding to do it. Without the funding, this is not, it's going to be, the ship's going to be dead in the water, basically.
One, one last question, if I may. Is there a possibility to get all of those who have made presentations together on short notice and say, who is doing what, so that we, that we are all on, on one level, and maybe then we can look at it, can we share equipment, can we do something jointly?
That's the point that I was trying to, you're saying exactly what I was trying to say, is that I think if you, if you're collaborative, if you have a collaborative effort, and you get everybody, you know, around the table, hey, we've got a problem here, 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 you know? Look at it from the wider angle and figure out what's the best way to attack this on a town-wide basis, instead of this piecemeal throughout, because this is a problem, and it has to be, a problem that has to be dealt with, and I think that the more people that you have representing each of these water bodies, the better off, I mean.
Could, could you call such a meeting?
We absolutely could call such a meeting, I think what you should do.
Yeah, would be greatly appreciated, for then, we know what the other, others have, how are they approaching it, and we can learn, and they can learn from us.
Yeah, people are going to be happy to work with you on coordination, obviously, you know how to find me.
Yeah.
And then, we could set up a timeline and, and reach out to some folks, and as you point out, everybody takes a piece of the puzzle here, and then, we get it to work. I, I always like, try to be more optimistic on the timelines of things, but, you know, if you read the paper, we finally getting a tax district, but, you know, I've been here for five terms, so, I, I know what Ed's saying, sometimes these things take, they take longer than you think, but based on what you're seeing, what you're showing here on your screen, and what we're hearing from these other folks that are representing other water bodies, we really all have to collaboratively get moving on this project.
We appreciate your time, thank you very much.
I don't think you can afford three years, I think the time is of the essence, just looking at these photographs.
Yeah, but permitting is going to be the, and funding, you know, because, I mean, we can turn to the Agawam Conservancy and see what the cost basis was of their algae harvester or lily pad harvester, just for a small portion of the pond that they're doing, and this is a much larger, much bigger project.
Right. I think with respect to the phragmities, if we could start to cut them back now, that would do a tremendous amount to restrain their growth.
You have folks that have them on their private properties?
Yes.
So, if they want to come to the board, you know?
An application before our board, I can, well, we can give you some guidance as far as consultants that have done these projects for the trustees and for, you know, other homeowners, and give you, you know, basically, a vision on where to go.
Okay.
So, I mean, contact James in my office, or in our office, and we could start that process, that'd probably be the easier of the two processes to start.
Okay. Homeowners that are having issues should approach the board at the earliest convenience.
You can, you can get a blanket permit for that, for a bunch of homeowners at the one time.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, that's what we had done in the past for the lily pads, we had given, you know, the association the ability to cut each one of the homes a path to the pond, so, we would look at it the same way with the phragmities. I mean, there is town and other entities own it and private property, starting on a private property would probably be the easiest.
In, in the case of a, a private property that, where the phragmities extend out into the pond, onto the, the land that the trustees are responsible for, how would that work if, if, say, a big area of the phragmities we were trying to clear, say, for example, that area that's in the image there?
Well, I mean, we would give a permit for the homeowner, and we would consult with our board to see.
How far out?
How far out we can go. The cost basis of the project, looking at, you know, it's probably a three-year process cutting it, so, I mean, we can come up with numbers and figures to, for a pilot project like that.
Great. Thank you.
So, I'd just like to weigh in here. So, first of all, thank you to each of you for your time and your concern for the pond. Lake Mississauga Association has been a very vibrant entity for a long period of time, I'm happy to say. So, I think this is a little bit complicated in some aspects, but I think we can dial it down to make it be something that is doable over the long term. Each water body, as you well know, that we look at is different, there are different aspects that are troubling to each one, so, if we look at this, because we haven't done anything that's specifically phragmities and lily pond, lily pad associated, so, if we look at this as a pilot project, that might be a way to move it forward, given those specific parameters. The fact that you have water quality data that goes back decades is very helpful in that. So, if we look at it as a pilot, if we were to start because of the ease of everything, permitting and funding-wise with the, with the residents who have the phragmities on their property or in front of their property, but there's an important distinction here in that this board can permit frag, the cutting of phragmities when they're in the water body, but an additional permit would have to be obtained from the Environment Division, from the Conservation Board for the phragmities that are above the shoreline. So, but, both boards have had many water bodies that have had phragmities cutting permitted on them, so this is not a new approach, and in addition to that, there's been much success with multi-year cuttings of these phragmities, and I think that is the way to go after it initially, but, drawing back a little bit, given that phragmities are such a problem in. But drawing back a little bit, given that phragmities are such a problem in many water bodies in the town, both Salt and Fresh and Brackish, if we were to look at this and attempt to go forward with phragmities and the lily pads and look to CPF for that, I think that would be probably the better long-term picture. Because given that Big Fresh is not Lake Agawam, and not to compare, but just it is, this is, it's a complicated thing and it's a time, time is of the essence and a time-consuming endeavor. And as you've pointed out, requires funding. And, you know, where these phragmities came from, it could have been a bird. You know, it's not, it's not as if there was anything that really happened, but when I swam in Big Fresh as a kid, there were no phragmities there. You know, like, we all remember that. But we are dealing with the problem with phragmities on multiple water bodies. So to look at Big Fresh as a pilot project, to move forward first with the residents, because one thing that CPF asks for on all of their applications is some type of investment from the residents in the community. And if we can show that you've already gone ahead and obtained these permits and started some of the cutting, that will be helpful when we go to them and say, may we apply for funding to help with phragmities because we know this is a problem town-wide? Bigger than that. But the timeline for CPF, usually in about late spring of each year, the application is due to the CPF committee. And it's, I'm giving rough numbers, but that's so, spring is when the CPF application is due. And there is a fairly lengthy application and we would want to present as, as well-developed a proposal as we could to the committee. In the summer, and again, I'm using broad strokes here, in the summer, the application is vetted with the Water Quality Advisory Board and then moves on to the Town Board. And there are public hearings that this process goes through in order to allow the applicants to speak on the project's behalf. And then in the fall of that year, the Town Board would approve the water quality projects. And we would hope that that would be, we would be successful in that. But anything, and I'm happy to talk further about that and/or any of us are. But we would, but that's sort of the timeline. So time is of the essence, yes, but with CPF funding, we are restricted by the structure within which they operate. So anything we could do on the front end with this would be super helpful. And I might also suggest that given that Paconic Land Trust is a landholder on the pond, it might be good to speak with them about working with them because they have been very effective and impactful with SAG Pond and Poxabog Pond. They're, they're starting to work with homeowners and help with some of these water quality, both the grants and the projects. So they have some scientists that are doing groundwater work on those ponds. This would be something that would be different. Whether they're willing or able to take on something else is a whole nother question, but at least they have experience with going through this process, with obtaining funding and working on the projects that they're interested in. But they are, they are very well organized and they're knowledgeable and they have deep roots in this community. And perhaps they also would have, and I'm speaking out of turn here, but they might be helpful with some funding sources in the immediacy of things. I don't know. So that's a lot in a bit, in a short amount of time, but just to try and give you just a timeline for CPF. But in addition, what we can do moving forward in the immediacy of things. Your residents, whoever has phragmities in the water in front of their homes, whether it's applying just for the single property or a string of properties or, you know, sort of blotchy string of properties, that would be a good first step. And then at the same time, working along the lines of the Conservation Board for the phragmities that are on the shore. So I hope that was helpful. We applaud your care and concern and passion for Big Fresh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're done with that discussion. Okay. You know where to find us.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Justine Welker, you having discussion?
Yes. Ms. Mary Ann Eddy, if you would please come forward, that would be wonderful. This is the SAG Harbor Water Quality Proposal.
Morning.
Do I sign in here?
Yes, you do, please.
Please. Last time I was here, I was down in a very small little room down in the basement.
Yes. When was that, Mary Ann? Was that?
Last year. I think just about a year ago.
That must have been the one meeting we had in person.
We had elevator issues in your building, right? So downstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've come a long way. We're upstairs now.
This is very nice. I didn't realize that there was going to be capabilities, but I have a couple of slides. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I'm talking about the SAG Harbor Water Quality Initiative. I live in SAG Harbor, I'm on the Harbor Committee, and we've had the SAG Harbor Water Quality Initiative going now into its fifth year. And you've been consistent supporters, which is very much appreciated. Can I connect to this? I'm on the Wi-Fi.
You have a USB flash drive?
No, I wasn't prepared, but I could give you my laptop.
Can you email the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it less than an hour?
I timed it. It's like less than five minutes, but it may take longer to get the thing up. So, forward.
You put in your email address there. And then there's one other here, let's see. Share this with you. Can you put that in again?
I don't know how fast your email goes here.
We will find out.
Last year when I came, I talked about how one of the things that we wanted to do was to look at the pump that you noted is pumping untreated water into the marina at Beacon. And I think you were very interested in that. Can we bring up the other one first, the slides?
I haven't gotten that one yet.
Oh.
Maybe Charles has a USB. I think he might have a USB in there. It'll allow us to use it.
Charles. Thank you, Charles.
How do you know we love you?
Charles to the rescue.
Plug it right in here.
Hi.
You have an AC line on that?
No. I didn't bring it, I didn't.
You didn't bring it?
I didn't. I thought we were down in the basement again.
We're moving on. We're moving on up.
We're not in the basement.
So what I want to do is just show you two slides of the results of the work that we did at the Beacon. And interesting, the slides, it's one of those things where a picture's worth a thousand words. I'm going to give you 10 words and then hopefully we'll have the slides. But it blew away any other sampling that we've done in SAG Harbor, in the coves or at Haven's Beach, in terms of the Enterococcus and the E. coli. It was quite astounding. Now, one of the issues we had is that we very much wanted them to be sampling right from inside this pump and before it goes into the marina. And they did that for a couple of times. These are grad students. And then they decided to cut the corner and they went and they took it from the outflow pipe, big pipe that goes into the marina. But they didn't take it right from the pipe. They took it from the area where it was outflowing. I was so upset. I was just fixed to retie. But the results showed the first samples, which came from the pump, and it shows the samples that then came from the marina itself. The ones that came from the marina themselves, when we did the microbial source tracking, shows, hey, a lot from birds, right? Big surprise. There are 75 boats in that marina and there's 75,000 seagulls all the time. But the two, did you get it?
Yeah, what's?
Oh, excellent. Slide 38, 39, and 41.
All right.
So this is the presentation that Chris made to us in April.
38, you said?
38, mhm. There it is. So you see those big, heavy, blue lines? That's the beacon. And the one that's all the way to the left came from inside the pump. And they stopped testing at 400 cells per, I don't know, liter, milliliter, whatever, whatever the quantity is there. So it blew away everything. And that is for fecal coliform, the next slide. That's Enterococcus. So again, it exceeded anything that we've been sampling before. So, and if you take a look now on 41, two down, right there, you're not going to be able to get this, but what it shows is the microbial source tracking, where it shows what their DNA shows as to the source of those samples. And the ones that were in the first two weeks when they were sampling within the pump, not in the marina at the outfall, it shows that there was human contamination as well as birds, as well as dogs and small mammals, as well as deer. So what we're doing this year, and we've started this project, of course, months ago, is we are looking at the storm drains. There's two major sources that go into that pump. One is a storm drain that comes in from the west, which is the villas, et cetera, et cetera. And one that comes in from the south, which is the parking lot and the low-lying lands there. So we're going to be able to discriminate more. I think that this can be helpful as we go into our sewer district expansion because what we need to do is sewer these areas. And it's all a matter of, yes, we want to do the whole world, but what do we do for second and third? And all of our grants all include this data. So this data has use other than my making a presentation and asking for money. There's applicable use for this. The other thing is that when I met with the East Hampton Trustees, I asked them how they use this data. And they use this data from the Gobler reports from SAG Harbor when they're negotiating with the DEC on shellfish issues. So that, again, that might be interesting to you and how you might want to use this data in some way. Let me go back here and see what, so, yes, so this year what we're doing is we're sampling from the sources. And the other thing, if you can, like, flip to the other slide.
Which one?
The other email?
It's the other email. And this is from the East Hampton Trustee, April 11th meeting, from Chris Gobler, because what they did, go ahead and push that. Let's see. I'm hoping it picks up.
Do you know what time?
Yeah. It's about 30. Try, go to 30 minutes. Right. Stop there. Back up, stop, and back up a little bit. Back up a little more. Right about there. Stop there. A little bit more.
Back.
Back. Back, back, back. I'm sorry, I thought I had this keyed up right to the right moment. There, stop there. Now go forward a little. Go forward, stop. And you can back up a moment. Are you familiar with the Hi-CAT? That's what this is about. All right, go ahead, start there.
Mary Ann, you just have to come, once you settle that, you just have to come back to the microphone.
Yes, okay.
So I'm going to show you a series of maps that we made. These were all done in the fall. I wanted to get.
Can you pause that for a moment and give a little background? And maybe you can wind it back like 30 seconds. This is something East Hampton Trustees did last year with a tool that Chris Gobler is explaining here. It's called a Hi-CAT. And it's an autonomous surface sampling vehicle and it operates like a Game Boy. You can preset a course, but this is what they did in Akabonic Harbor. And what it does is it measures temperature, salinity, dissolved oxygen, what's the other one? Chlorophyll A, et cetera. And it was very interesting. I listened to this in April and I went, I want this. So we are doing that now. We're doing three cruises and we are doing them all in the coves. And one of the things that it can help us understand is the flushing, or the lack of flushing that takes place in the various places around the shoreline and through the middle. Interestingly, we're going to go through the south shores of North Haven, not SAG Harbor, and we're going to cruise all around Bay Point, which is the site of like, I don't know, how many houses there? 300, you know, individual onsite septic systems, right? And then we're going to cruise along the Long Beach and then we come back up through SAG Harbor. I think that this should be very helpful. Can you go ahead and just play that for a moment and it'll give them an idea of what kind of results?
So transitioning now to other water quality parameters and oxygen.
Go forward, please.
That we measured on average during day/night cycle having a high.
Okay, this is right there. Okay, go ahead.
Wait.
Day/night cycle having a high and low period. And so what you see in that back part of the Three Mile Harbor, as you go through summer, it's usually.
Just tick it up a little bit.
I can't go any further.
Nightly exertions down to low oxygen zone. So nothing anoxic, which is good, and nothing sustained for hours.
I meant going forward in the presentation.
Forward?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I had it keyed up in, forward, please.
Here you can see that where there's.
Forward?
Yes.
Yeah, there it is. Good.
It also can actually do bottom soundings if you want to do the symmetry of a given water body. So all these things allow you to make surface measurements. And we've done this before, but this is actually the, because the GPS unit is integrated with the water quality measurements and there's a whole software package that goes with it, it's given us sort of a, look at that again, it's given us a whole new way of looking at things. So I'm going to show you a series of maps that we made. These were all done in the fall. I wanted to get these done in the summer, the peak algal blooms, but it was still, we had some great opportunities. So I'm going to show you a few from Akabonic Harbor here. Of course, again, this is fall and so, you know, the trends you see in the fall would be different from the ones you might see in the summer, for example. And you can see here, there's different ways of presenting the data. I have alternative views that I thought people might like. Well, I wasn't sure what people liked better. This shows the exact tracks, it's showing the exact data. You can also do something called interpolation, where you can colorize the entire, entire water body. But I kind of like this one because you can see where the vehicle went. Oh, and I should mention, so when you do these sorts of what we call missions for the Hi-CAT, you can do them in two ways. They can be pre-programmed, that's what we did here. So this is hands-free. You, in advance, you program how you want it to run. It runs that program. You have a telemetry antenna.
Do you want to watch more of this? I don't want to take too much of your time. I can send you the link.
As needed, you can overthrow the controls at any time. There's literally a gaming joystick.
So we're doing this all inside the bridge and we're doing a circuit all the way around the shoreline and then we're doing some zigs and zags. We did it on July 15th. We'll do it the middle of August. We'll do it the middle of September. And I think that that'll help us understand a lot about the water movement and the water quality within the coves. So what are we doing going forward? We've got all this data. One of the things is that we've contracted with Mark Wagner, who's with Cameron Engineering. He's our engineer on the sewage treatment plant. He's also. He's also going to give us an overview of what we can do for four areas in Sag Harbor, two of them that are in your purview, which is Otter Pond, and the other one is the beacon area, which we just saw those extreme examples of. And we've also applied for a New York State grant. This is not in Southampton. We are going to be looking at the whole watershed for Haven's Beach. Doesn't interest you, but if this is successful and helps us understand the gray infrastructure that's contributing to a lack of success of cleaning our waters, it's, we will take that and we will replicate that on the Southampton side. So we don't just sit here and, like, make pretty pictures. Anyway, thank you. We'd really appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, what's the approximate history of the Southampton Town trustees' contributions to the water, the water quality initiative? And comparison of the East Hampton trustees, just ballpark also? Bless you. And how many sites East Hampton Town has versus Southampton? If, and just a ballpark is fine. But just so that...
Right. I think that the sites are about this, are about the same. I think Haven's Beach has had more, if you consider Haven's Beach as one site, it's probably equivalent. But what we've done is we've gone through various points in that sump, trying to figure out where the pollution is coming from. A lot of people think the pathogens are coming from the dog park. And last year, we went and we sampled directly at the outfall pipe before it ever hit the sump. And no, it's coming further south. It's coming from that neighborhood. It's coming from my house, up there on 114. That's why we very much wanted to study the whole watershed and how that water, the runoff, is being managed. East Hampton trustees gives us $2,500 every year. And you all have given, I could give you the exact numbers, but it's either between 1,000 and 2,000. And last year, you gave us 2,000, which was a very nice and appreciated contribution.
And what are you asking for the, for this year?
I would love to see 2,000 again, but be very grateful for anything.
And what's your timeframe?
We always wait for your contribution before we send the whole basket of governmental entities. There's an issue with making contributions from municipalities. It has to go to Stony Brook Research. Stony Brook Research deals with, you know, mega contributions. It's a whole, you know...
Complicated.
Yeah, it's a whole deal. You cannot walk in and get a new account from Stony Brook Research. So what we do is we lean on the existing account that East Hampton trustees has, and we wait for all the money to come in, and then send it in one bolus up to Stony Brook Research. So, and usually, we wait for you guys, and that's fine, we wait. And then we put it in one package, and we send it to Stony Brook Research. And that usually happens as soon as we know you guys are ready.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for your updates and your presentation, your hard work.
Thank you.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
The enterococcus numbers and the E. coli numbers that you demonstrated are all in Southampton Town trustee waters underneath the bridge in Southampton Cove, in the...
The ones from the beacon?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So there is on Water Street, we call it the beacon because there's the Beacon Restaurant right there, and there's that big marina, A dock and B dock. That's where we were sampling, that exclusively. Those blue lines was only the beacon.
Are the numbers in East Hampton at all comparable, or any of them?
No, this blows away everything that we've done. That's, that's what I was trying to say. I mean, hey, yeah, you could see Windmill Beach bizarrely, terribly. I mean, that's all like a, not a sewer line, but a storm drain that comes all the way from the library, all the way up at Union Street, comes all the way down through Main Street and dumps out. And sometimes there are really bad numbers there, which is very concerning, because you walk by it on a hot day, there are always toddlers, you know, kicking around in the, you know, the near shore. People think it's a very safe beach. That's another discussion, right? So we've, that's why it's one of the four areas that we're working with Mark Wagner and that we're going to be looking at to see what can we do to mitigate that runoff.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I applaud your efforts. Being a bayman, first and foremost, it really makes me concerned that there's an outfall pipe with that much fecal coliform going into, you know, or close to certified shellfish growing grounds, specifically the scallop grounds outside of Sag Harbor.
Yeah.
I can't understand how the DEC or anybody could possibly even allow it to go, you know, free-falling into the bay. To me, it's like they're complicit with polluting the bay. And the DEC is the entity that we all turn to, to enforce and to make sure that the bays are clean. So it's kind of, you know, hypocritical on their part.
Well, I don't know that they know these results. I would be delighted if I forwarded this to you and you forwarded it to them. I agree with you.
I mean, I would, I would love this.
You should definitely forward it to our board.
Yes.
Yes, I think I did, but I will do it all over again. And I really appreciate your support, because I don't necessarily get the kind of decisive measures from Sag Harbor.
Well, I would also send it to the Southampton Town Baymen's Association, which would love to see this information and maybe...
Great, I don't even know about them.
...write a letter for your project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, you say you don't get the support from Sag Harbor?
Well, I say, all right, what are we going to do about this? I'd like to post signs. We are, we did get the money from Mark Wagner to start looking at issues of what we're going to do.
If the village is the means, if the village is not supporting you, why should we support you?
They... No, 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 the Sag Harbor Water Quality Initiative, they, $7,500.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. They are the biggest...
You portrayed it, you said that Sag Harbor's not...
No, 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 you were, you were talking about in terms of, like, forwarding the information to the DEC or something. I mean, I would love to do that. I should do that, you know? But I feel a little questionable, like, me doing that? Am I the right person to be doing that? I don't know.
We can talk about that.
We can talk about that.
Has anybody contacted the Board of Health to put signage at these outfall pipes, recognizing that there are pollutants in the water and people shouldn't be swimming in there?
That's what I was thinking, is where Suffolk County...
I mean, it's...
Well, Suffolk County, this is one of the beaches, Haven's Beach is one of the ones that they, is a Suffolk County beach.
Yes.
And...
But, but the, but where we're speaking about beacon is not.
Beacon.
Suffolk County, they only test bathing beaches with lifeguards.
Right.
So this is another example where it falls between the cracks.
Right. It's Windmill Beach, right?
I saw a notification, we also about, I guess, Sagaponic, with a harmful algal going on in there. You know, so it's like, maybe they need to expand the horizons, especially when you're saying that it still could be a public health issue. You're saying there's toddlers there that are...
I have pictures of that. Every time I go down, there's a toddler there, I take another picture of it. You know?
Public health and safety should be priority.
Yes, I agree.
So...
I agree. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann.
All right, I have some, we have some executive sessions popping up, so I'm going to get moving on permits. Seventeen Bay Road.
I apologize. I'm John Seymour, you have 260 Big Fresh. I know this is out of control.
Well, you can't speak from there, sir. And we don't have, we don't have, what do you, what do you, we don't have a public portion at work session, sir.
Okay, so this is in connection with, this is in connection with a Lake Missapog request. Trustee Welker suggested that there might be a need for, or could be favorable if we did a pilot project. I thought I heard the pilot project could be either fragmites or water lilies, or both. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course. And I'm happy to be in touch going forward.
The other thing is, you don't have to necessarily, based on the level of where we're going, approach us at the meeting. You could, you could call and make an appointment, have a conversation, and the officer on the phone to discuss whatever you need to further at your convenience.
I didn't realize that you would do that outside of working sessions.
No, we will. We will, okay? We're the most approachable board, I think that there isn't, in the township. Just call our officer.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah. So we have Seventeen Bay Road, I have land use. What he's done, if you could pop over there, that would be great.
Hey, guys.
Morning, Chuck.
This is a pretty simple application. There's an existing dock at this property. New home was being built there. Not new, renovated with some new additions. But the existing dock is 45 feet in length, a fixed dock, in pretty poor shape. So to get out to the correct amount of water, it's going to be extended to 64 feet with a 3x15 ramp and, of course, a 6x20 float, all open decking. The other part of the application, if, if anyone from the board has been there, he's had a bit of erosion on one side of the property. You'll see that red line there. It's also steep bank. There's actually a tree falling in over there. And sandbags have not really worked too well, so what we proposed was just a single row of boulders along that small little area that would then be covered with sand and planted. The other part of it, because there's a lot of turf areas on this site, it slopes down to the water. You can see the orange line up there is a one-and-a-half-foot-high berm that would also be planted to keep the upland runoff from the fertilizers from going into the bay, to the creek, rather. So that's really the applications in a nutshell. If you have any questions. The berm is about 45 cubic yards.
Is that in the conservation or in our...
Pardon me?
Whose area that, is that...
Well, we're the village.
The village?
Right. So, you know, the village waits, we have DEC, the village waits for, for you guys to sign off on your, your part of it, which is really the boulders and the dock.
So you have the mean high water here below the boulders, but you also have a high-water mark down here?
It's spring high.
Well, you have spring high here, and then mean high water, and then you have a high-water mark here. It's a little confusing. So you got high-water mark and edge of grass down here within this yellow?
The tidal, the tidal wetland boundary.
And then you have mean high water here, which is still below the boulder location, and then you have spring high water right in between both of them.
It's a bank, so spring high is right, it's a, basically a clip.
Do you have photos of the site?
I think the photos were submitted in the application.
There it is.
Yeah.
So you're proposing the berm where...
Oh, in the upland, in the grass.
Okay, so that's...
The berm is beyond trustee jurisdiction.
Got it. And the boulders are being proposed...
Right where the sandbags are, right now.
Can we permit those sandbags?
No. Not that I know of, anyway. The house was sold probably about a year and a half ago. The sandbags were there.
Not working. Sandbag's not working out?
No.
They're like in the top...
And they're, you know, they're, they're plastic, too.
They disintegrate and they end up in the environment.
Yeah.
Is that a bulkhead there? Or is that the sandbags?
No, no, that's the sandbags.
There's no bulkhead right here?
That's a neighboring property.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
So your, the sandbags going to the neighbor's bulkhead?
Correct. The sandbags by the long edge there.
The bulkhead's probably making the erosion.
Yeah, like I say, the sandbags are deteriorating. There's a, some trees about to fall in, one in particular. So it's really just to hold that steeper bank. The rest of it's actually a very shallow bank.
It's north of Turkey Bridge, isn't it? So what do we have here? Just want to deal with what's in the trustee's jurisdiction, right?
You have the dock and the boulders, really.
Is there a pier line here? And what's the distance to the other shore?
Oh, yeah, no, we conform to Blue Book.
Okay, good.
All right, it goes out, so we had to make it a little longer to get to two-and-a-half feet of water.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Thank you.
So I'm looking at this description, very detailed description, but I think, based on the location of the property, just for clarification, James, you think perhaps we should amend this just to have strictly what's in the trustee's jurisdiction here?
Yeah, anything, I mean, that would be my recommendation. Anything above mean high water is not your jurisdiction.
Let's clarify, that way we're not stepping on...
Oh, no, that's fine, Scott. It's not, not a problem.
You know?
You don't have to do that.
I'd be more than happy to work with the folks in the Village Aquaguard on whatever it is they want to work with, but I think best to keep it concise. We'll amend this to strictly to trustee's jurisdiction and then let them handle.
Yeah, the owner, I mean, we started, I mean, he wanted bulkheads and everything else. You know, we got down to a few boulders and a berm.
I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing this to this board's attention, because there's confusion a lot of times with the trustees' ownership of underwater lands in the villages. And when it comes to that, obviously, we want our say, because we don't want pressure-treated material and...
Right.
...the bay bottom and so forth. And, you know, we want things done the right way when it's on our bottom. When it's outside of our bottom and up in another jurisdiction, I have respect for that, too.
Yeah, now, like I say, the village is very easy to work with. And again, we're just trying to avoid having any more structures there and coming to you and asking for something that's not necessary.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's, if it's like well above where that high tide mark is we're looking, I think it's better if they handle that and we'll handle what's in ours. So let's amend this cover sheet, and we'll deal with what...
Yes, amend it to specifically what is in our jurisdiction. That way, when our new dock inspector goes down there and does the compliance check, it's easy for them to understand. They won't have to read through all the other... Oh, no, that, that's fine. No problem. It's easy to do. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll wait for your update.
Yeah, no, we're, yeah, we're going to, we'll change it and send it right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
I have a couple more things that are on here, but I don't think that they're represented today, are they, James?
I'm not sure. Where are we at? Seven Dolphin?
Kristen is not available to come, and Agina is also not available.
So, but my, yeah, my other two don't have representation from...
Agina has asked that you review it anyway.
Review it?
It's up to you.
Okay, so let's take a look at this.
Are we doing Seven Dolphin? No. We're going to hold down.
Eighty-three, hold that, because I have no Kristen.
All right. So Agina has reconstruct in place same height, 271 feet of bulkhead with vinyl shee piling to provide non-turf beach grass buffer as per Southampton Blue Book regulation, is all material to be untreated.
This is the old Colonial shores?
Yes.[1709.33] So this seems pretty standard.
Yeah. Give him a dredging permit, a couple of years.
Yes, we did.
Remove that sandbar.
Yes, we did give him a dredging permit.
Very familiar with this.
So this, I think, this project here, I think, is, I don't think there's any unanswered questions here. You've got to go to the same height.
Error.
Same height, same length. You're commercial, you're just doing a bulkhead replace with Blue Book compliant material. I think this is...
You're taking out an old Creosote bulkhead.
I think this is a good project. It's Blue Book, right?
Here's the...
As it's...
Inside bulkhead?
Yeah, as it's stated here. Why don't you show the rest of the...
You want me to show?
Yeah.
Plans?
Yes.
They should include some dredging with this project.
Zoom in now a little bit, please.
They should.
Man.
You're just doing it here, right?
It's a bulkhead, too.
That's so small. How much? Two-hundred-and-seventy feet?
Two-seventy-one.
Must be the inside. Oh, yeah, it's right here where the blue is maybe.
It's so faint. It's in there, it's on their property, right?
Can you blow that up at all, James?
What's that?
Agina's gonna come back. Agina will come to our next meeting, right? And explain this.
I'm sure she will.
So...
It looks like a pretty standard project, but we could actually...
The outside, right?
She can clarify any questions.
The yellow's on the outside, right?
What's the...
It's the outside.
Yeah, it's outside.
It's outside.
Yeah, that's why I'm gonna blow it up, now you can see it.
So they're not raising it at all, so it's basically replacing exactly what is there?
And she's doing the buffer.
Yeah.
So I think it's okay to go.
I think so. I agree with you, Scott.
I think it's okay to go. It's a standard bulkhead replacement with buffer.
Yeah.
With compliant material. So I don't see anything controversial there.
I'm good with that.
Advancing?
You go with that?
So we're gonna advance this with Agina's presentation?
Yeah, I mean, it's, she's, her application is representing to reconstruct in place with the same height, two-hundred-and-seventy-one feet of bulkhead, vinyl sheet piling, and to provide a non-turf beach grass buffer as per Southampton Blue Book regulations with all material to be untreated. So that complies with...
Blue Book.
Everything we do. So I don't see why we would deny her, or deny this applicant the ability to maintain their bulkhead within the, you know, conditions that we set forth in our Blue Book. So I don't think, I don't think we need her.
No, I think we just advance it. I'm fine with it.
I'm good with it.
Trustee Parish?
He's fine with it.
Could I see the buffer? Because that's a fair extent of bulkhead, three-hundred, almost three-hundred feet.
Would you like to see the buffer?
Yep, what's being planted in that buffer?
She says non-turf beach grass buffer.
Agina has done some exemplary buffers where she's used native plantings. Would that be something that would be suitable for this location?
Well, I think that...
Grass is native. American beach grass.
I think it meets Blue Book.
Right, Ed?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's on the bay, so you can't put any trees or anything there. So anything that's gonna get overwashed and overtopped with storm surges, it's a unique area because they're not elevating the height of the bulkhead at all.
I think she meets Blue Book, and I think that's the key in this application.
But given that it's open bay and that there's very little buffer there and that native shrubs and anything that would be in addition to just beach grass might be more protective in this situation, not only as a buffer but for erosion capabilities? Just a question.
Yeah, I mean, quite frankly, because of the, it's a commercial exposure in nature and it does meet Blue Book, you know, I'd be inclined to advance it. I think it's satisfactory for what is needed there. That's what I think. I mean, I hear what you're saying, and she has done a good job with some of those, but based on what this application is and based on what our regulations are, you know, I think it's, I think it meets the tests of what we would allow.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be no turf grass or anything there that, you know, actual grass like a lawn because it's gonna get overtopped by the seawater.
I wasn't saying grass.
I'm okay the way it's presented.
I am, too.
Trustee Parish?
Yes.
You all right there? Let it roll. Let it roll. Advance it.
I have two-fifteen Norac Road versus coastal. Billy Mack, wake up.
Can you bring that up?
Yeah.
Billy Mack versus coastal for the applicants.
This is a hundred-and-eighteen-foot-by-four catwalk.
It is Blue Book compliant, non-treated materials through flow decking, and it is in a section in North Sea that we don't meet the two-and-a-half-foot depth, so we're just looking for a catwalk out to a appreciable depth.
It looks really, really good, but it's always a but. Make it shorter.
So we're ending at about a foot and a half, splitting between a foot and a foot and a half. That's usually the ideal spot to, you know, launch a kayak and paddleboard and that kind of stuff.
I think my ideal spot would be taking a line from the float or the dock and go to the other dock.
Okay, kind of draw that.
There's a pier line.
A pier line.
So that would be like about one-point-three?
Or, you know, somewhere around there.
Yep.
So about a foot of water?
Yeah.
Just over a foot.
You can launch in that.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I get it, but, you know, if you have any other, it is limited.
What does foot-paddle kayaks require? Foot, the foot-paddle ones, what kind of depth does foot-paddle kayak require?
Yeah, at least a foot.
Foot and a half?
Yeah, foot and a half. I mean, you got...
Skates are a foot sometimes on a lot of the, you know, even a paddleboard.
The ground's pretty hard there. They can walk out and get into it.
True, but we're, you know, trying to make it accessible. I mean, he can walk out of it the way it is right now, but...
And that, if, when you say that, you want it accessible for a forty-foot yard or...
No, accessible for water toys like people have, which are paddleboards and kayaks.
They get to the water, they can walk out a foot.
Well, you know.
Yeah, but you pretty much created a pier line with the other two docks there, so...
True, but those docks are... Nonconforming. Completely. So, I mean, we're, if we're making a pier line on a nonconforming situation, I...
They're pre-existing, that's the trouble.
Yeah, I mean, they, both of those docks end in...
Yeah, they could not get a permit for those docks now.
Exactly, and they're both floating, you know, God knows what's happening at dead low.
On bottom.
Yeah. So we prefer to get to a depth that's functional, and that's why we proposed it.
Yeah, I think we have to make it shorter if you want it to go quicker.
All right, how about if we bring it back to the one-point-five instead of the one-point-six?
Let's go to the pier line.
It's right about there.
That's at the one-three to one-five?
Yeah, I mean, that only gives the bitter end of it about a foot in depth.
What is the, what is the dimension from that one-three to the end of what you're, where you're hitting the one-five? What's the...
The length?
Yeah, what's the length?
The decrease in, that we brought back from sixty feet? It's probably about ten, right?
Yeah, it's probably about ten feet. Fifteen feet.
So fifty instead of sixty-foot catwalk.
Yeah. I mean, I could, I could ask the applicant. I know that, you know, he's got kids and everything else, he's trying to get out to water that he can get to without muckiness.
Does he have a ladder on the dock, do you believe, or no?
No, we'll have to put a ladder.
We'll put a ladder on there.
Yeah, otherwise, no matter what you make, they're...
Of course, we're gonna make it shorter.
I think you need some, you need some specifications on what a foot-paddle kayak requires.
Yeah.
That's the type of thing that I think people...
Yeah, I can do that.
I always, I always thought, you know, when you're looking at the appreciable water depth, you think of foot-paddle kayak.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, because you still need something there, so...
All right, let me do a little research on that and rework this. I'll talk to the applicant and see what he says about Bill's proposal to pull it back as well.
Now, we have, you have another one?
Two, indeed.
Two-oh-three Norac Road, right, right down the road from now on.
Down, yeah.
This one is a hundred-and-fifty-seven-foot catwalk, four feet wide.
Mm-hmm.
It's eighty-three from mean-low water.
Meets the pier line.
And there's your, your line.
Yeah. We are trying to get out to deep water, and we are right at the pier line.
Yeah, and you, on your, on your, on your plan, you drew a line from, from the neighbor's dock end to end.
Yes. Can you make that bigger, James?
Yeah, a little bit bigger would be good.
That's great. Thanks.
Yeah, it's negative two feet of water there.
Yeah, we can't get to two-and-a-half feet, but we could...
Yeah.
At least get to two, and...
So you can tell your client from the other one, you did it with a pier line there, with a line from dock to dock.
Yeah, this one works because those other docks are a little further out, especially the guy to his west. Even though they're pre-existing, you know, have their such, their limitations, this, this would work on this site.
I have no problem with this, how it, how it is.
It's all open-grade decking, Bill?
Yeah, all open-grade, no handrails, except the steps.
Yep.
You gotta put a ladder.
We'll put a ladder at the end.
And this is all marsh along here?
Yes.
There's no beach where people would be walking?
And there's no beach on that site at all?
No.
Yeah, it's not a very...
Accessible.
It's not very accessible. This is a higher bluff situation that drops down, but it's all either fragmites or marsh.
Yeah, it was dredged out years ago.
We had that situation.
But it's no beach.
No.
Looks good.
Well, it needs a little bit more...
Description?
Yes, on the cover sheet, there's no, there's no mention of non-treated materials, there's no mention of through, through-flow decking.
Okay, I think that's called out in the site plan.
It needs to be repeated, though, please, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah, you need to spell stuff all out.
That's just detail, Scott.
I'll get that.
There's too much, you know...
Leeway there.
Non-consistency and things going on that...
Also, can you make your print a little bit bigger?
It's tiny, right?
That's embarrassing for first coastal to have that. All the technology they have there.
They have no ink.
They have no ink? I know you guys are saving money up there.
I'll note that.
Can you add the ladder to that description as well?
Just give a new cover sheet.
We'll add a ladder as well.
Yeah, with all the other stuff like GNC, which is good.
Good, we'll modify that.
Yeah, you see, you can't expect the board's gonna be hunting through...
Understood.
Site plan because people put things, oh, it's in the site plan and this big a print. It's not, it's gotta be on the cover sheet clear.
One other, one other thing, if you're going to put electric on the dock, you need to go through the proper permitting process.
Yeah, we did note that on one of your inspectors.
Yes, I was at the inspection site with him and noted it, yes, so we know.
His electrician, or the property owner's electrician is doing exactly that.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
That's a different...
A little different.
Yep.
All right.
You're advancing pending the new cover sheet?
New cover sheet.
Another one we're gonna hold because he's gonna talk to his client.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Billy Mack. Next I have three-oh-nine Norac Road into science. Mr. Walker and company.
Jim Walker. I'm here with Sabrina. This is Sabrina's first dock, so I'm here to help. If you kick her very hard, I'm gonna kick back, but Sabrina's ready to go.
Hi, good morning. My name's Sabrina Kelly. I'm from your science on behalf of the applicant, Daniel Zambursky, at three-oh-nine Norac Road.
You have to talk up a little bit louder.
Sorry. Is this better?
You can pull the mic down in front.
And thank you for making the print big enough so we can...
You're welcome. So, proposing construction of a residential dock extending sixty feet from the mean-high water line, which is the pier line in North Sea Harbor. The dock would include a paddleboard and kayak rack, a four-by-six drop-down platform, along with four mooring tie-off poles. The dock would be constructed with untreated wood and light-penetrating materials to comply with Army Corps and trustee standards. It would be four, the bottom of the dock would be four-and-a-half feet above the wetlands up to mean-high water line, drop down to twenty-six inches, so the top of the dock is complying with the trustee's standards. We propose the dock in an area with the deepest soundings at one-point-seven feet. We're also proposing a four-foot-wide leaf-mulched path through an existing non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer. The path varies very slightly from the path that's shown on the CWC issued by the Environment Division, but it does avoid any mature trees, which is what Marty Shea had requested when we went out to the site and proposed that leaf-mulched pathway. And we haven't received any responses from the Army Corps or the DEC or the Department of State, and I welcome any comments or questions from the board.
First, you have to drop some of the handrails.
Sure.
It's very thick.
Okay, yeah, we can propose the minimum handrails necessary under the building code.
Maybe some wire down low. You have very limited, limited amount of water there, so...
Correct.
Four tie-up poles, what are you gonna do? Tie up a kayak to it?
It would be a small boat, if possible.
So we, we wanna get rid of the four poles? No poles, no tie-up?
No poles?
No.
Okay.
They're not, you're only, you're talking about...
Right, very limited soundings, correct.
Three inches of water.
Correct. Okay.
And what kind of, you mentioned a kayak rack. What does that look like?
It should be shown on the plans, just a standard kayak rack to hold two kayaks.
It said SUP rack.
Yeah, stand-up paddleboard kayak rack.
That's what that stands for?
Yes.
Two-by-six or something like that?
Sure, whatever the board recommends, yeah.
We just didn't know what SUP meant.
Sorry.
You got up to four kayaks or five SUPs.
So that's gonna be two on each side?
Two on each side.
Marine-grade stainless steel construction.
And put flow-through on here.
On the application itself? Sure.
So if you wanna come back about, or with another plan for the, your handrails?
Sure. We can do that. Revise plans and revised application.
Take the poles off.
So they show the kayak racks actually attached to the dock, or is that...
No, no, it's those marine-grade stainless steel construction.
Yeah.
So now we went through this in Mecocks about the kayak racks.
Yeah. It's what the state's requiring.
Do you have a picture of it so we can put it with the...
We'll give you a factory cut sheet.
Yeah, that would be good.
Last time through, that's what we did. We're scratching to come up with the stuff that DEC will accept, and also, I think Bill gave us some grief last time about kayak racks and whether they were gonna stay and be strong enough. So stainless steel kayak racks are pretty standard, and they work, probably work pretty well, but the DEC seems to be objecting about open, open-framed kayak racks, which I personally think is a huge mistake because it makes it much easier to use a dock if the kayak rack is the same level as the deck, and you pull the kayak onto the deck, you go down to the little drop platform that we designed at the end and step in the kayak and go. But I think Christian Naeko at DEC is probably not gonna be that flexible to help Sabrina out. We'll give her what we normally give for the DEC, and you'll get it at the same time you get the other stuff.
Did they give you a rationale?
Christian Naeko?
Yeah.
Give him a call.
Did he give you any rationale?
Yeah, he doesn't want infrastructure over the water.
Yeah, they're cutting back on any light.
There's no... You go down to the little drop platform that we designed at the end and step in the kayak and go. But I, I think Christian Naeco at DEC is probably not gonna be that flexible to help Sabrina out. We'll give her what we normally give for the DEC and you'll get it at the same time you get the other stuff.
Did they give you a rationale?
Christian Naeco?
Yeah.
Or rationale?
Give him a call.
He didn't give you any rationale?
Yeah, he doesn't want infrastructure over the water.
Yeah, they're cutting back on any light.
There's no
I know.
Open frame kayak rack doesn't make any shading on the bay bottom. It's, it's kinda silly. And it holds up better than other ones that we see. It's kinda nice, but the stainless steel ones, maybe that's a
What is that? Just hang them on the side?
Yep. Two kayaks on a stainless steel rack seems like a pretty okay.
And you're gonna send us pictures of them?
Yeah.
Please?
Factory cut sheets.
Okay.
We have a new dock inspector, so I wanna, you know, when he goes out and
Who's your, who's your new dock inspector? Is it Gustavo from downstairs?
No.
No.
He told me he got, got a code enforcement.
I wanna, I wanna give him all the plans and everything so when he goes out, you know
So he'll know ahead of time.
That's what he's looking at.
They'll reattach right to the plan, so
Okay.
Part of the approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina. Thanks, Daniel.
We're gonna hold that, correct?
I'm gonna hold that one.
Yep.
It's on next, next week, two weeks.
All right.
I'm done. It's, Ed's turn now.
Two seventy East Montauk Highway, LLC, two seventy East Montauk Highway, Landus.
Good morning again, Charles Bowman, Landus Psychological Services. I'm sure you're, as everyone in the town, especially those of us who grew up out here, is very familiar with this site.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
In fact, I used to hang out and fish there when I was a kid, you know? That is for sure. If you remember, it always had some old cottages on it and then the bulkhead deteriorated. And it's been non-functional for years and years and years and years. And, uh, you know, we used to actually sneak over there, pass the marlin, you know, and, uh, and, uh, and hang out on the beach because there's never anybody there. That being aside, um, we're ripping out the old bulkhead. We didn't do these plans, by the way. These were done and approved years ago and expired. DEC has approved taking out the bulkhead, moving it approximately twelve feet back. Putting in a new bulkhead that would be about three feet higher and ripping out, ripping out the old ones. About four hundred and thirty-eight feet of, of bulkhead, of course, who would meet trustees' requirements as far as the bulkhead construction.
Well, I have a lot of questions because I know this bulkhead has been non-functioning for more than twenty years.
Oh, my God.
More than thirty years.
Yeah, forty?
Subsequently, um, wetlands have established behind the bulkhead.
Right. We flagged the new wetland.
I've, I've been down there several times. It's, I haven't been down there since you guys flagged them because of the ticks and everything, but I was down there this winter and looking at it.
Yeah.
I think our board's biggest concern is, is, is gonna be the net loss of wetlands when you put the new bulkhead in.
Well, I, I was thinking about that, Ed, and, uh, you know, and we'll, we'll certainly do whatever the board wants, but at one, uh, to me, that's, it's a problem with navigation there, the, and it's gonna deteriorate. So I don't know if it's a good idea to, you know, normally we might cut it off and keep the wetlands behind it. But I don't know with all the boat traffic in there if that's a good idea or not. But certainly, perhaps we can do some sort of low sill landward of the existing bulkhead.
Yeah, that, that was what my thought would be with kind of like a low sill, uh, you know, bulkhead there, allowing you to keep the integrity of the
Sure.
bank and still allow the wetlands because, I mean, you know
Oh, there's a nice wetlands behind it. Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, and, and not allowing any more erosion to happen on the site.
Right.
Raising it three feet is like, that's well above what, what I, what I would ever imagine there. I mean
Okay.
Like I said, I've been down at the site a few times and I asked James to look at it, our environmental analyst. But, uh, but I mean, it's, it's a huge, you know, you could put a low sill bulkhead through that whole run, allow it to maintain the wetlands and still use your property behind it.
Well, I mean, the way I would visualize it is, uh, and I'd rather use, you know, to create the, uh, the sill, I'd rather use rocks than, uh, than bulkhead-ing there to create it and to protect the wetlands behind it. But then we'd also need another structure landward of that, uh, right at the, at the, at the bank.
At the bank.
Yeah.
So you're looking at a multi-faceted approach?
Well, I, I don't know, like I say, you know, theoretically, you could cut off the bulkhead now, you know? I, to me, it's just, you know, that, all that, that bulkhead is just gonna deteriorate. Pieces are gonna fall, you know, fall off and float away.
Yeah, because, I, I mean, I seen what was allowed on the other side at Cowfish, uh, the rock, you know,
Right.
industrial rock jetty that was placed there, you know, it was, you know, not our board that did the review of it, and I think it's a little bit extreme, so I was hoping
No, I'm, I'm thinking about it, you know, single row, I mean, I'd have to take the elevations and see. I mean, I don't, I'm not talking about a revetment, I'm talking about like more of a breakwater.
Yeah, something that would displace the wave energy from the boats driving by and then allow a structure right behind it, like a tiered approach where you would be saving some part of wetlands and still maintaining the property.
No, I, I, that, that's fine. And, and I, again, I just want
A lot of wave energy there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of wave energy.
Oh, the boat, the boat traffic, and that's what I'm saying. If you, if you leave that bulkhead there, it's, believe me, it's gonna be a, a problem. I'm sure you guys know that.
I mean, I, I mean, anybody else on the board that, you know, would like to go down here and look at the project and I employ you to go down here and look at it because, I mean, it's a, it's a significant, you know, piece of property that's undeveloped as of right now.
Yeah, it's amazing that it hasn't been developed, but, I mean, it, it truly is. But watch out for the ticks if you
Oh, they're, they're terrible. So, um, but
Are they gonna eventually put slips on the other side or?
I don't, I think they're more, the new owner
Just wants to protect.
is Al Kaila. I don't know if you even remember his house, uh, you know, over on Schenectady Bay on the, on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, I don't know what he's gonna be doing with it now. And like I said, there were permits to do this in the past.
Oh, yeah, it was all kinds, that was before I was even on the board.
Oh, no, I go, again, you know, I, you know, you know, I had to be six years old when I was sitting on that dock, you know, fishing, you know, so
Next question is, if, as we move through this process, is that dock that's sitting in the canal there that's falling apart, is that gonna be removed?
Oh, I, yes.
I mean, I mean, can we make that contingent upon, would this permit? Because I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be a navigational hazard and, you know, there, there are young kids that like to try to climb on it and still fish and it's, it's not safe for anybody. Yes, so
That's true.
If you could come up with another set of plans that we had discussed, um, I'm willing to, um, you know, if you wanna go on-site, you can contact me. I'll take, we'll take a boat ride over there and not get inundated with all these little ticks that were on the property.
No, that, that, that's fine. And I appreciate your comments, so let me see what we can do, but I agree with you a hundred percent, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
Okay, ten seventy-six Ocean Road, LLC, ten seventy-six Ocean Road, um, Susanna Herman of N. Consultants. Good morning, Susanna.
Good morning. So initially I submitted an application to the board for the entire catwalk that we're proposing here. It's a four-foot by one-hundred-foot catwalk that goes from the residential area out to the water. There's not a lot of water there. This is the very end of, um, of Sam's Creek. And there's a dock right across the, um, the water from this, but this, we only have about one foot of water depth at the, um, at the end there. But, um, because of where the high water ends, it turns out that only the last four feet of this catwalk is within your jurisdiction. So we went to, um, the Environment Division and we got a wetland permit for the structure with the understanding that we would come to the trustees to get a permit for, for the end, that last four feet, which goes beyond high water into Sam's Creek. So it would be four and a half feet above, um, the marsh and through, um, open grade decking. Pretty simple.
Do you have any site pictures?
Yep.
Yep. That's on the landward end. It goes through some brushy wetlands on the, the landward side. And then that's the, um, the area of Sam's Creek that we're talking about. It's pretty narrow. It's a lot of fragmites there.
So you'd never even see the dock if it was placed in there?
Oh, no one's ever gonna see it.
No, I mean
And maybe the neighbor across who has that dock there, but we're actually up the creek from, from where they are, just, you know, a few feet. So only if they're standing on their dock looking to the left are they going to see this.
My concern would be if it's a narrow waterway, four and a half feet above grade, it's gonna stick out like a bridge, but evidently it's gonna be completely confined with all the grasses and everything.
Right, and only four feet sticking out beyond the fragmites.
Yeah.
Should be okay.
Yeah, that should be fine.
And the, we are in receipt of a letter from the Environment Division that supports
Okay. I can give you a copy of that permit too if you would like. I'll put a ladder at the end. Was that your comment?
No.
Oh.
No, we definitely
Maybe a step.
You know, originally it was, we were trying to do it low. We proposed it two feet above grade, but the, um, the Army Corps insisted that it be four and a half feet up.
You gotta do a ladder.
We are aware.
So we'll, we'll add a ladder.
Safety.
What kind of handrails are you gonna have on it or?
I'm not proposing any.
Okay, that's fine.
There, I mean, you're You're packed in by dense fragmites and, um,
Those are your handrails.
some viburnum on the, on the upper end of, landward end of it. You, you really
Good, good, Anne. Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Susanna.
Thanks, Susanna.
Advance with the cover sheet adding the ladder and, and the plans, I guess you'd
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Robert McHugh and Kathleen McHugh Family Trust, DKR Shores is not represented today, so I propose, um, holding that. But I would like to walk on forty-nine Crescent Street, um, if you'd like to come forward.
Is it okay with the walk on? Yeah.
It was inadvertently omitted, I mean, omitted from the agenda, so
She dropped.
If you would like to describe the project, Mr. Downs?
Yeah, it's, I've had a dock there since the seventies. Uh, it's grown over the years, depending upon, uh, the boats that I've owned. And I've got a jet ski that I, I've been launching down the neighborhood, off a trailer whenever we wanna use it. Quite frankly, I'm getting too old to do that, so I just wanted to put a lift in. So I need one piling with the, um, aluminum apparatus that'll lift the boat up and down.
So this is an application for the piling?
For new piling?
Yep.
Or a jet ski lift?
And the piling will be approximately two, three inches seaward of the power post that's there.
Sure.
And the power post is gonna move to the other side.
Do you have active permits for the current
Everything, yeah, everything's permitted.
Everything's permitted.
Both New York State, DEC and Town Trustees. Like I said, I've had, I've had a dock since the seventies, so it's, that dock that's there now is about thirty years old.
Does anyone have any questions?
What do you think?
I'm fine with this.
No, it's, it's, it'd be a second vessel at the dock.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Downs. I'd like to advance this, please.
Thank you.
But is there another hearing on this or?
Just a general session when a resolution is, is
There'll be a resolution at some point.
There'll be a resolution at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You might wanna put a ladder there, put a jet ski lift.
Mr. Downs, do you have a ladder on your dock? You just have to come back to the, to the podium, please.
Question from trustee Powell.
There was just a question asked, um, do
No, there's no ladders.
You might wanna put a ladder, um, where the jet ski is gonna be, the lifters.
Where the jet ski's gonna be? Well, the type I've got, it comes up and swings around and sits on the dock. So when it's not, not in use, it's sitting on the dock.
He's just talking about a general safety ladder for your dock.
Yeah.
I think that would be a
It's not a problem. I don't know where I put it.
Somewhere located where the jet ski's gonna be in the water.
Okay, I could put a, I could put a ladder in there.
Yeah, on the safe side.
Sure, no problem.
Because you don't wanna write, really write that down on the lift, someone on
Okay, great. Thank you.
Use the lift brakes or something.
So do we need
Do you need a diagram of the ladder? I mean, it's gonna be one of those bolts right into the dock?
That you're gonna install a safety ladder, that's all.
Okay, terrific. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
New cover sheet stating that, that'll be fine.
Okay, so trustee Parrish.
We have, uh, the application of Patrick A. Burke, seven eighty-seven Montauk Highway, Briag, First Coastal Court. Mr. Mack is back.
Yes, sorry, he's coming back.
Hello, hello. Nice to see you guys again. This is pretty straightforward. It's a floating dock, ramp, and a stick dock that leads out to two and a half feet of water. It's non-treated wood, through-flow decking. Actually, our overall length is sixty-four feet from the high water. Overall, it's eighty-five for the stick dock. Or catwalk.
Eighty-five for the
We do show a ladder there.
Thank you.
And the, and the font is much bigger on this plan.
Yes. I think you just do it to me.
I can't read those little ones, so I don't know why. But I think this is all Blue Book compliant and, um, the neighboring area has, uh, you know, uh, consistent docks with what we're proposing.
Light penetrating decking?
Light penetrating, through-flow decking, yep.
The handrails?
Not proposing any handrails on this.
Good. Yeah. James, you say?
Just the two-point-five is on the outside of the float. It should be on the inside of the float. But if you move it on the outside of the float, if you move the dock out, then it's over the pier line.
Yeah, I think he's okay.
Yeah, we, we need it on the outside.
I think you're okay.
It's up to you guys.
Either the boat's gonna sit in two and a half feet of water.
I think he's fine.
Should be fine.
I think he's fine.
The regulations say otherwise, so it's up to you guys.
It's right on the cusp.
Inches.
Yeah.
You're splitting hairs here.
Did you say we may need an advisory ladder? James?
For the dock that's outside of that is conservation board?
This is
Briag?
I would believe so.
Briag, but, um We could, we could
You guys could take the whole thing, of course.
We could, we could take the whole thing and ask for an advisory. Let's do that as we've done in the past.
Yeah.
Because it looks kinda standard in nature, so I think we should handle this the way we handled some of the ones we used to do. Yeah, let's just ask for an advisory from the, uh, Environment Division on board.
Okay.
So we'll just, that's what we'll do, like we did on the other one.
Okay.
You good there?
Do you wanna We good with that otherwise?
We're good with that. We'll just ask for an advisory before we send it to, uh We'll hold it, we'll hold it pending the advisory coming in from the Environment Division. Other than that, it looks good.
Makes sense. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
So that's what we'll do, Bill. All right?
You know, while I'm here, I did have a comment about the fragmite issue. And it might be worthwhile for you guys to get together with the Conservation Department to put together, um, guidelines for property owners so you can come up with almost an administrative permit to allow cutting with a prescribed type of guidelines. Because fragmites are a huge issue. We, we deal with this constantly.
Yep.
And it, you know, the, the biggest hurdle is getting the permits. The property owners are eager to do the projects, but it's getting the permits. So if you could get together with the Conservation Department, the DEC is, their brain is now wrapping around the idea of this, um, maintenance cutting, which if you do at certain times of the year, you're actually loosening and, and decreasing the, the, the strength of the roots. So I, I think would be a great idea for you guys to get together and just make it easy for the property owners to do this.
I think that's why I was suggesting a collaboration.
Yeah, great idea.
Because each one of these, uh, projects are on dual jurisdictions.
Yeah, exactly. So Conservation Department involved would be great.
And to your point, it is becoming a big problem throughout the entire
It's huge. And then the biggest hurdle is it's not the cost for the property owners, it's the permits.
Do you know approximately what the cost is to, I mean, it depends on the amount of water.
It, it is a loaded question, but, you know, typically on a, on a regular property, if they have a crew go in there and cut it four times a year, each cut is about twenty-five hundred dollars. It's not a lot of money.
Okay.
And the more you do it, the less you have to cut and it, it allows, once you open up that seed bank
Right.
to light, it allows the native vegetation that's already in there to come out.
Beautiful.
It needs, it's amazing.
Yeah, we gotta get proactive on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so
I'd love to help out and whatever
All right, so we've
Thanks, Bill.
We've got some exec sessions work that we have to do, and I see we've got our, our building inspector here. We have folks here, right?
Capital Projects Manager.
Capital Projects Manager. We've got all kinds of stuff going on here. So that concludes the work session agenda for today, and I think what I would like to do is make a motion to, um, close this part of the meeting and go into our executive, uh, session. We do have an executive session agenda set for today. Second. On favor?
I'm not.